Verizon time is 3:00 PM, so I'd like to call to order the May meeting of the Middlesex County Board of Supervisors. We'll start out by welcoming a nice crowd of interested citizens today. It's always a pleasure to have our citizens and folks come and take part in the meeting. I'd like to go ahead and ask Mr. Jesse if he would open the meeting with prayer, followed by Matt Walker leading us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
There's a bar here, there's a prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, just like to thank you for waking us up this morning, giving us another lovely day. And dear Lord, let's pray for this board and citizens who come out as we can conduct county business, dear Lord, and pray for the sick and shedding of the community. These in all the blessings, in Heavenly Father's name, amen.
Amen.
But all citizens of our nation, rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mansfield asked that we go ahead and start without him. He was here early, but he forgot his glasses, and he said at 78. The guy, glasses doesn't go very far, so he'll be back in a few minutes with his. Item number one is the approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second the motion, then second it. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so ordered. At this point, I'd like to go ahead and open our meeting up to public comments. Reminded, please, that each citizen, unless they're representing four or more, are limited to three minutes, and out of respect for the rest of the folks, if you would stick with that, I would appreciate it. If you run over, I'll simply ask the board if they desire to have you continue. If they do, then you can continue. So, there we go. First citizen, please.
I'm Lud Kimbrough from Kennard Lane, Deltaville. I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for recognizing the importance of the county's waterway accessibility in your annual resolution to maintain the dredge fund at $750,000. As some of you might remember, a study conducted by the Middle Peninsula Chesapeake Bay Public Access Authority estimated that the probable annual average cost for maintaining creeks and channels in Middlesex County is $415,000. The estimate for Broad Creek and Jackson Creek by themselves was $137,000 per year, and the third major county commercial creek in Urbana was $73,000. Fortunately, in recent years, we have not needed dredging of Urbana or Broad Creek, and we succeeded in maintenance dredging of Jackson Creek with grants and private contributions that minimized the need for county money. But we need to watch the condition of these water highways carefully to ensure that the county stays open for business. Accordingly, I want to make you aware that we have recently had Corps of Engineers survey both Broad and Jackson Creeks to provide a snapshot of their status, so we can be mindful of any future changes. If Mr. Mansfield were here, I would offer to help him facilitate a survey of Urbana Creek, but that offer I'll make to him after the meeting. With its recent maintenance dredge, Jackson Creek looks good. Broad Creek is beginning to show some signs of shoaling. I'm going to pass around these surveys so that you can see, there are yellow arrows indicating on Broad Creek, an emerging problem. Nothing needs to be done now, but I did want to thank you for continuing with the set aside. It'd be great if we got back to putting more money aside each year, but I understand that's not going to happen this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next citizen, please. Seeing none, we will close the public opinion period, public comment period, and move on to constitutional officers, and I see that the Sheriff's Office is adequately represented today, so Sheriff, would you like to address us?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. My phone goes off. It's where I put on vibrate, but it's a new phone. I haven't figured it out yet. All right.
Thank you for the reminder.
Okay, I come before you. It's getting close to the end of the year, and I needed to move some money around in my budget, and I sat down with Matt and Betty the other day, and Dina, my secretary, and we would like to move some monies around into the compensation line. And the reason for doing so is the compensation this year went way over because of all the break-ins that we had, the fires that we had. We had four-man teams out all night, running for months at a time, and it put us over. The money's in the budget, our budget, but we just need to move it out of some other lines. So before you, on line 0010 contingency, I'd like to remove, take $16,711 out of there. 001001, compensation full-time, $20,000. Was that the money that we found back in? We're funneling back in? Okay. And then the forensics, $5,000, which is 3008, and then the gas, which they were really good on this year, we can, we'll make it through the end of this fiscal year. Line item 5408 of $12,000, which totaled $53,711, and that will keep us, our people employed to the end of this fiscal year. And I would ask if we could do that?
We have a motion on budget transfer request form FY2019-14. So move.
Second.
Motion duly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. So ordered. And I think you had one other request for insurance.
Yes, we had a vehicle, one of our newer vehicles that was still under the lease. He was going in code with licensed siren to a call, and someone pulled out in front of him and totaled the car. No injuries in that accident, but that vehicle was totaled. By the time the insurance had taken the money out, we were left with $13,293.45 roughly. Well, it's a difference. It was $7,000.
Seven thousand something for this vehicle, but you had a couple other vehicles.
Right. We had a couple other vehicles, which we have a line item there now for $13,293.45, which I would need approval, so I can move forward and try to replace that car. It's a police package car, so we can get another lease going, or do something, or we can put some money down on it. I think what Dina was trying to, we're working with two different dealerships that are in the state protocol, and we're trying to get a good deal out of trying to move forward to get another vehicle in. So I'd like to go ahead forward with that. And in that, it wasn't the deputy's fault. That person, what state police did charge that person for making a turn in front of the vehicle.
Do we have a motion on FY2019-43? Also move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so ordered.
I have one question for the sheriff.
Yes.
On the breaking and entering and the arson, I imagine the arson is kind of off the charts this year. Can you speak to historically, are we on an uptrend in both or either?
Well, we can't claim an arson because we never arrested anybody, so we suspicious fires. But as was put in the paper, that person was in jail and nothing happened. People are watching that person, nothing's happening. So I think as long as the community is vigilant, watching, we hope not to have any more fires like that. That's unusual for us here in this community to have that. BNEs, they come and they go. It depends on the strain and what's going on economically in the community. This year, we saw a huge influx. I mean, it was a lot of breaking and enterings. A lot of times, we don't get those solved, but I have to thank you for a lot of the software that you allowed me to purchase. That helps solve a lot of these crimes. This year, we had to put a lot of man-hours out and a lot of cameras out. A lot of surveillance equipment went out to catch these people. So we're hoping that that trend, sometimes if you can beat down on it real hard, it'll stop, and we hope that that trend goes away. This is unusual. We usually don't have this.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Sheriff.
All right. Thank you. You all have a great day. Oh, by the way, in Hartfield, the accident, everybody's asking, there was four, five accidents in the county on Saturday. Five accidents, which is really, that's strange, but that was, we worked one of them, the state police worked four of them. So there is going to be a thing in the papers. We be careful. Everybody's coming down to their homes. Got to watch. We've got a lot of farmers on the road planting right now, so we're asking the citizens to be careful while they're driving. No taxiing, please. Okay?
Thank you, Sheriff.
Have a good day.
All right. The treasurer's report is a report only, which is pages 51 through 53 in your packet. And moving on to agency and staff reports, I see Joyce McGowan is here from VDOT.
Well, good afternoon, members of the board. Matt, everyone. You have a report in your packet there. One of the main highlights there, I guess, to follow up with, was last month, we had a couple of traffic engineering requests over the last month or two. For 609 Bills Road, we did look at it for speed and safety, so we've determined that the speed limit is warranted the way it is, but we're still looking at the geography of the roadway and to see if any other additional signs or placards and some school bus stop signs are warranted. So we haven't finished on that. So there may be some additional mitigation signs that go up to kind of help with some of the issues.
What is this speed limit? Is it not posted? What is it? 55 or 45 or?
It is unposted, right, Ron?
35.
It's 35.
So it's 35?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, maybe we need to put some more 35 though. I know what it is.
If we're all asking what it is when it's not posted, that's a pretty good sense of what people.
When it is posted.
People, if we don't know, I'm guessing the people don't know what unposted is.
We'll check them out and see if they're visible.
Okay.
And Whiting Creek, since we've turned in our report, that speed study, I think, came back, and we will be posting that at 25. And the Route 3 safety review just came back to our office. At this point, we don't have any recommendations for changes based on the type of crashes that occurred, and that, the crashes are, they're evaluated based on the type of crash, when they happen, what type of injuries, and what type of property damage occurred, and we use that against our averages across the state, and it's below our statewide averages at this point, but we're going to continue to watch, because there were a higher number of crashes there than normal. But based on why the crashes happened, whether it was adverse weather or distraction and those sort of things, kind of determine whether or not VDOT can put something out there or change something to keep the accidents from occurring, so. So we'll be reviewing that whole, we'll review the study ourselves and then have some conversations back and forth to see if there's anything else.
In your review of that, Joyce, and I don't pretend to be a traffic engineer or anything close, but what I've noticed, as I travel Twigs Ferry quite a bit, is it has a very narrow shoulder, and sometimes the pavement drops off to a very small gravel shoulder. And if it's raining or not raining, and you happen to be distracted, which is inexcusable, but for whatever reason, if you go slightly off and that tire catches that lip, I saw one of those accidents happen in front of me, and that's probably why I'm really knocking on this.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, she, she just got her tire caught in that lip, and she lost complete control and did a 90-degree into a telephone pole.
Okay. I'm keeping an eye on those. A lot of the mitigations that we're doing system-wide is adding rumble strips, either to the center line or the shoulders. You'll see more of that occurring on your two-lane roads without a median, on your primaries in the future. So that's one way to help keep people, you know, off, off the roads and the shoulders and things.
Well, along those lines, when you have the asphalt paving and then the resurfacing these listed roads. When you do that, does it, is it part of the protocol to improve that edge at all? Because like John was saying, we see it around the county, and mail carriers have mentioned it, you know, with rain or just erosion, a lot of time where you go from pavement to gravel, it really drops, and, you know, I know you're always patching them. I saw that there was a big one on Route 17 that was like, probably about three feet deep. But is that part of when a road comes up for paving or resurfacing?
When a road is repaved with asphalt, usually those are your higher-volume roadways, and we repave them under our maintenance program. We don't widen them to add new shoulder, because they're a minimum width that the shoulders have to be, and to create those new shoulders is more or less like new construction, because if you put them out there on something that can't support it, it won't last. So our maintenance schedules are designed to replace the asphalt in the prism or the area where the pavement already is.
Where it already is. So if it's degrading on the sides, it's going to?
If it's degrading on the sides and it's already asphalt there, we're either repair that, or we'll add shoulder, shoulder stone up against the asphalt to have a shoulder there, a gravel shoulder. And sometimes people do run off the road, or large trucks, or, you know, farm equipment, things like that, if, you know, they could, they could beat out the shoulder stone. So we have to go back in our maintenance section and replace that fairly often on a lot of roads.
So that, replacing the gravel shoulders, is that something that's on your schedule, or is that something that needs to be requested, either by citizens or the county?
No, it's on our schedule for our primaries.
Okay. And may I ask another question about the mowing schedule this year and the litter pickups? I was told that VDOT is doing all the mowing, and that is changing the protocol for the litter pickups, or what's, what's the plan there?
So at the moment, we will be self-performing the mowing. We won't be using our contractors. It doesn't mean that we won't go out ahead and pick up the trash or have our contractor come out at this point. So we won't, we haven't put together our schedule, but either way, we will go out and pick up what we can for the litter. So we're thinking that we probably will do our primary mow in the first week of June. It'll start the first week of June.
June for mow. And you're talking about 33 and 17 and 3, that's the prime, that's what you mean by the primaries?
Because we, yeah, we've used, we've used a growth regulator on the primaries that are divided highways to try and suppress the grass from growing as fast to give us more time to have to mow, so. Trying to save some money using that method instead. So we, we'll still address the litter if it's really bad. We do have contract services and things that we can use to come in before or after we mow.
All right. And thank you to the crew that follows up when we have the, the litter committee has the contracting with the inmates doing pickups, but I know that sometimes it's, it's quite a few bags that we pick up, and I know they try to get out there.
Yeah, we'll be glad. Just, yeah, if you have bags that need to be picked up, just call us.
Because when, when citizens ask about doing a pickup, and we can say, you know, if you have 20 bags or so, you can leave them and we'll get VDOT to pick them. That helps incentivize people to, you know, not have to deal with.
Yep. They can, we have our Adopt a Highway program. If they're doing it on a regular basis, they can apply a really quick permit here at the office where they would get a sign put up that has the name of the organization or the group or the community that's doing the work, and we'd also provide bags, the vests, and things like that. And on the primaries, if you're doing it there, we'll provide signs that shows there's people working ahead, and then they get credit for it. And then we, we're partners with Keep Virginia Beautiful with that. So if you want to send them our way, if they're doing it, we'd be glad to help them out and walk them through it. But anybody can call, it's 1-800-3, I'm going to say 4 Road, because I can't see the phone thing on my head, but if they have litter or pickups like that, they can call us and turn in a work order, and it'll come straight to us if they're helping us to pick up the litter.
Okay, that's good to know. Because for smaller pickups too, our litter committee, Keep Middlesex Beautiful, you can contact us and we're getting the orange bags with, you know, for smaller groups or more occasional.
Yep. And we, we help partner with other counties. If you do a countywide litter pickup, we're partners, we'll help you with that too, so.
Thank you.
Please also thank your team for the patching on Twigs Ferry and also the repair of Dirt Bridge Road. I know a lot of calls came in to a lot of us about Dirt Bridge Road, and you're supposed to magically produce a pipe and fix over a course of days, but you called your shot and got it repaired in the timeframe that you promised.
I did, I did. Some people were, yeah, pushing. They kept sending me pictures. We're almost there, we're almost there. But, yeah, Dirt Bridge, I guess, I guess, wanted to give kudos to our folks. I was supposed to bring some pictures, but I'm not real tech savvy evidently lately, so I'm not sure what's going on with the thumb drives in the office. But our, if you aren't familiar with Dirt Bridge, our folks within probably two weeks repaired a, two four-foot end diameter pipes, they're 40 feet long, across Dirt Bridge. We put in two pipes, put in all the bedding, two end walls and all of that, and had the road open by May 1st. That was the date. So they met their deadline and make sure that those, it's like 3,000 cars a day cut through there every, every day, so. It was important to get it open, and even though the detour wasn't that bad, we're creatures of habit, and we like to go where we like to go, so, so that, I want to, you know, I'll send, you can take those pictures, maybe we'll have them next time, so. And to go back to Route 3, on your resurfacing list, Route 3 is one that's supposed to be repaved this year, so the shoulders and things will get redone when they do that, so, the two-foot shoulder. Any other questions for me?
I just would like to get a line on that growth regulator product, so I could put some on my yard. Didn't even know that existed.
You can make your yard concrete and green.
No, I like the grass, just not to grow quite so fast.
I'm trying to go for the concrete and green, but my husband won't do it.
Joyce, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to school matters. I don't see Dr. Peter Gretz, but I do see Karen and Tracy, so y'all come on up and talk
Good afternoon. Dr. Gretz regrets that he cannot be here. He's at the State Superintendent Conference for two days. So Karen and I are here to share two things. One, let's see, appropriation requests, and then we have some news of what's going on in the schools. And this, I believe, should be on page 57 in your packet, and it is for insurance to be appropriated to us, and that's funds for one of our vehicles that was damaged and needed to be replaced.
That would be FY2019-42.
I move that we approve the budget supplement request FY2019-42.
Second.
Motion duly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so ordered.
Very good. Thank you. And I just wanted to share, and Dr. Gretz has created a handout that I can give you also, just some of the upcoming events now through the end of our school year. It is currently Teacher Appreciation Week, so lots of celebrations going on in the schools, and then we have Fine Arts Festival this Thursday night. It's held at St. Clair Walker, but it's the MHS students. We've got pep rallies, baccalaurates, award ceremonies, and then our culminating Middlesex High School graduation, which is on June 8th at 10 o'clock at Middlesex High School. And so I've just got a handout with those dates. We would enjoy you all being able to attend, whichever things you can, and if you have questions, don't hesitate to contact Dr. Gretz, or Karen and I can also answer questions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Karen?
We also have Rising Sixth Grader tonight at 6 o'clock, so.
Social Services is report only in your packet, pages 58 through 60. Next item of business is from the library, request to waive fees. The letter is from Carol King, and it has to do with the replacement of the front doors. I trust everybody has, has read that and has a, oh, she's going to come forward.
Hello. Good afternoon. I'm really here just to answer any questions. The letter was sent to the board on May 2nd, is requesting a waiver for the permit fees. We need to replace the front door of the Urbana branch.
And that cost is $68.45.
I move that we waive the $68.45 fee for the building permit for the project at the Urbana Library.
Second.
Motion duly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so ordered. Go forward with the front door.
Thank you very much. Don't forget your library. Your library, Karen.
And we've got a special guest speaker with us today, Mr. William "Wild Bill" Cawthorn, who's going to talk to us about how to collect our taxes, late taxes. Bill Welton.
I'm Bill Cawthorn. I think I know just about everybody here. Good to be here. I guess I got cornered into coming. I saw Peter at a party one night, and, and I said, I was glad to see that the board has decided to collect the back taxes, because as a citizen, you know, that's great. We need to collect the back taxes before we impose anymore. And I said, I did have a problem with what I saw in the newspaper, and I guess this was three or four weeks ago, and it said that we wanted Heather to do them, or we wanted Mike to do them, or we wanted to hire, well, if we could find an outside agency at 80/20, you know, we might do something like that. First of all, I've been in the collection business for 30 years, a firm, collected throughout the state of Virginia, didn't do tax work. We did mainly medical collections and other type of collections, real estate collections and things. Very few people do tax work, because most people keep it in their, in their house. I think Huff pulled in, and the Beach might do a little, have them contacted them, but it's still the same thing, is that on the 80/20 percent split between what you give and what you receive, the important thing is not so much the rate that you charge, it's what do you return to the, to the person that's giving you debt to collect. And that's the really important thing, and it's like, if I was coming to you to solicit your business, I would want to know a lot of things, and I'm wanting, how much debt do you have? How old is your debt? What is the breakdown of your debt? You know, how, how do you want it? Do you want to collect it hard? Do you want to collect it soft? I imagine being Board Supervisors and everybody's out for the vote, I would think a, not soft collection, but a stern collection would be what you'd look, look for and things like that. The, the, we, the real estate taxes, I think you already collected them in the way possible by referring them for tax sales. I don't know any breakdowns of the amount of the taxes that are owed to the county. I didn't feel like I had the right to go and pull those from, without somebody's permission, but I imagine most of the taxes are personal property, business license tax, real estate tax. The three that I, does anybody have an idea how much is owed the county?
I think it's approximately in real estate, I believe it's, about 800,000 over the last several years.
And the real estate itself?
I believe it's, yes, sir.
Having a personal property?
No, I wouldn't know personal property.
Okay. And see, I think that's a boat that everybody's in. Nobody really knows. I think it's going to be, the treasurer will run the collections?
Well, and we have a representative of the treasurer's office here. We just don't have those numbers at our fingertips.
Okay, well, I'm not, I'm not, but generally, that's what you find. And so, and I'm not pointing fingers. Will the, is the treasurer up for election this year? So probably the new treasurer should have some input. What I'm suggesting to you as a group is to sit down, and if you need some help, I'd be glad to sit down and give your assistance, on what to look for, what to ask for, but it's the new treasurer's decision with your guidance as to the way you go collect the money. Some of the advantages are, right now, I'm sure you send a tax bill, they pay it or don't pay it, and after a certain amount of time, you probably send them a reminder. They either pay it or don't pay it. And then probably after a longer period of time, you send them another reminder, they either pay it or don't pay it. No calls, no nothing, no, you know, encouragement to pay. And I think if you're serious about collecting your money, you look at getting either somebody in the tax office to make these calls. Probably I wouldn't recommend that, because they are already booked to the max, or hire an outside firm to do your collections for you. That would probably be my ultimate. I think we, they talked about Heather and Mike doing that, I mentioned that earlier. They're not equipped. They don't have the personnel, they don't have the people. You know, in a, in a collection firm, you get the account, it's put on automatically, the letter goes out the first day generally. So they, they got attention, and then after 10 days, if you haven't had a response, another letter will go out to them. Then if you have no response, and you've got to make a decision, we used to just have to decide whether to sue or not. I think you'd have to break your categories down to see whether they suit worthy, a certain amount, you'd have a limit, a lower limit on what you would sue on. The county is lucky, they don't have, the clerk doesn't charge clerk fees for filing warrants. I've checked, I thought I remembered that from the past, and I checked over with the clerk today, and she said, no, they don't. You still have to pay for service, which is $12 if you use a sheriff, and between $8 and $12 if you use private process service. But if you've got somebody sitting on a $1,500 bill, and they're here, and you know they're here, and they're employed, certainly would be something to think about, is putting a little pressure on and suing them. Because what you, what you don't have at the present time is any way to collect the you don't have at the present time is any way to collect the money. You can, you charge them interest as you go along, but you're not making them pay. Where if, if, if you had people that could pay and they were identified, you've got garnishments. All you've got to do is do it a few times. Middlesex is a small county. It'll get around and people will pay the bills. And so it, it's just, it's got to be some forceful effort on your part to encourage the payment of bills without making the public go crazy. It's got to be stern, but the majority of people will support anything we do, or you do, uh, in, in collecting their money. Any questions?
Yes. There are agencies that you could say, here's the bill. We've made two contacts with them and, and nothing. Uh, you take it, and if you can collect it, you get eighty percent and...
You'd get an agreed-upon amount. I'm not saying...
We would get eighty percent.
Percentages run from fifteen to fifty. Now, I'm not saying, but that's a variety that you see in collections. Depending on the type of collection it is, the age of the collection, things of that nature. But that would have to be analyzed by whoever you were hiring to do the work. Is, you know, they want to make a profit, and you want them to make a profit. So they've got to analyze your account so they can go forward and, and, and give you the effort that is needed. Because these, these machines that make the calls, they make a hundred thousand calls a day, but they're not cheap, and they're not cheap to maintain.
Bill, have you had any experience with the firms that take their collection cost and add it to the debt so that they can return a hundred percent?
Depends on what you, I, I'm not familiar enough with taxes to say that can be done. It can be done if there's a contract written that says that can be done, but it just doesn't automatically happen.
Oh, I know. I just, we had had some experience in retail with that.
Right. And that's, 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 retail has learned that they need to write in, and, and attorney's fees. They are responsible for the court costs and the, sort of the service fees automatically, but as a judge will give you judgment for that. But without something in writing, um, you're not going to get that.
My understanding from our previous discussion was that we sort of were learning the, the process that the treasurer's office has for that first notice and then that second notice. And then when it came to, all right, now we're serious. We're thinking about trying a case. There was some lack of clarity as to whether it fell to Mike Hurd or to our county attorney. And that, that was the reason I think those two names were brought up. It seems to me what needs overhauled before we have, um, any consideration of going out to a private firm versus just utilizing our own current regiment or system is we probably need to meet as a board with the treasurer's office and the commissioner of revenues office. We can make it a public meeting because we're not trying to hide anything, uh, but we all need to be there and be part of the discussion. And I think we need to discuss what the treasurer's office, what the commissioner of revenues office, what they think is leading to our collection rates. And I think where I would start that process is I understand that our collection rates are similar to surrounding rural counties. I'm not content with that as, as our answer. Do we need to shorten the time between first notice? Do we need to make two notices or three notices? And at the ultimate point where that third notice is, okay, we're taking you to court, we need to, as you suggest, make it known that we're serious about it.
Right. And I think by establishing that, the worst people that we found that we, we wanted as clients, what didn't want as clients is a person that was working a five-year-old account up to the day they wanted to turn it over. The, the way, I mean, your, your staff is not equipped to work old accounts. They're equipped to work the new accounts and maybe the slightly delinquent new accounts, um, past six months. Once someone got to a year, you, you don't have a staff to continue to work those like you do the, the newer accounts. And so I agree with you. I think, I think you're...
Well, I, I think the, the thing that's obvious about this to, to the constituents and to the board is, okay, let's collect taxes owed before we raise taxes on those that are already paying. But I think the, the secondary advantage here to staff in particular in the treasurer and commissioner of revenues office is if we can lower the amount of collections and hounding that they have to do, you know, instead of a hundred and fifty mailers going out at that first notice and eighty-four in the second notice, if we can cut that number down, that leaves them more time to do their day-to-day tasks and less, less time chasing this money. Let's, let's make it clear that we are coming. So we're giving you some grace periods, but we are coming. And I think if we can set that tone, it'll free up staff time. It'll, it'll make our collection rates better. And, you know, by setting the tone, it, it will create less work for our staff.
Well, I agree. By having a complete collection system from, from the treasurer's office to the attorney's office or the collection agency's office, whoever you wind up using. If you've got a, a whole system in place, your collections will improve drastically.
But I, I also think it's important that we do it in the public with the treasurer and the commissioner of revenues office. If, if we want to make it so that it doesn't have to be announced as a public meeting, I, I can see where we would commit a, uh, create a committee with just two supervisors on it, but I still think it should be done in the public so that the public is aware that we're, we're not just in the paper talking about collections. We're actually encouraging the public to be a part of the process and to, to voice their concerns. Are we being aggressive enough? Are we being too aggressive? Um, but to do so in concert with the staff that actually has the experience of what it is to try and collect here locally in Middlesex.
And how, how about including Bill on that?
If, if Bill, you're willing to commit some time to it, we'd love to have you. I want to speak for myself, but...
To address John and, and Bill, um, one of the items that was on my agenda for tonight and then hopefully carrying over to the June meeting was to get, um, Heather on the beep hole ordinance and, and get the language straight there where we know if it does have to go to legal, whose responsibility that is, whether it falls with the county attorney or the, or the Commonwealth's attorney. And I think once we get that straight, then we go to the level. Uh, and we're, we will be dealing with a new commissioner of revenue because, uh, Bonnie's not running again. So there's no rush, I don't think, in doing that because we want to coordinate that with the new person who had responsibility for that office. So does that, does that sort of progression make sense?
I agree. I think, I think what we should do between now, or you should do between now and the election of a new officer, or with the beginning of the year, I guess, when they take office, I don't know exactly when.
First of January.
It's to find out exactly what we have.
Yeah.
To find out the type of accounts we've got, the age of the account, um, and are we even trying to elect accounts? Business license tax scares everybody to death here.
Well, I was going to comment on that in my comments and then ask that we be prepared to take action on directing Heather to work on that ordinance and do that in the June meeting, if that makes sense to everybody to progress that way.
As a, um, so I don't know that you need an ordinance for the county attorney or Michael to do it yet.
Well, there's already something in place that there's confusion over what the expectations are.
Oh, who's supposed to do it?
So we just want to get those expectations straight before we move forward.
I agree with both of you. I think that's the first step is, is to have Heather look at the, the ordinance and make it clear to us what, what, if and when we get to that point where we need to come after a, a taxpayer to pay their taxes, who's going to do what? And have that lined out. But then I think there is some urgency, and I think having this done prior to election, it allows the incoming commissioner of revenue and the incoming treasurer know
No platform.
That this, this is how it's going to work, and we're going to stay out of your business, but we want to know that our collection rates are going to rise.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Bill, return you to your first statement when you came up. And first of all, thank you for, uh, doing this. But, um, and you talked about as a citizen and the integrity of the tax collection system. And I think, um, for me, that, I think that's the important thing here is that, uh, as a board, we want to reaffirm or reestablish that it's very important, uh, in the interests of all the taxpayers who are the vast majority, way beyond vast, who are paying their taxes, um, that we enforce our collection of taxes. And I think that's what the board is, is intending to do. As John said, you know, anytime we look at raising taxes, we need to say, well, wait a second. Are we making sure that every segment is, is actually, you know, paying, uh, what's, what is already on the books? So I think that is an emphasis and important, that integrity of the tax system for people who are paying. Um, but I also want to make clear that, at least for this board member, I'm not looking to criminalize this whole system and start charging people with felonies. And I think there was a little misperception.
It's not a felony.
Right.
You couldn't do it if you wanted to.
But I think there was a little misperception when we initially did that because I had conversations with a couple of constituents, and I just want to be sure that that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about, um, pursuing in a, in a businesslike way with respect to everyone's rights, the legal collection of taxes that are owed to the county. And for people who are, for whatever reason, facing a hardship in meeting their obligations, many of those people are in communication with the revenue or the treasurer's office, the treasurer's office, excuse me, and on a plan. And that's not who we're talking about here. At least, um, that's not my perception. They're, those are people who are working and are, um, trying to pay their taxes. I think what we're looking at is, uh, property or the perception of some properties where, uh, lack of means is not the issue.
Right.
Um, and that's, so I just want to make sure that the, our citizens know that we're not, you know, looking for, um, you know, to put, put people in, in jail for this. We're looking to collect rightfully owned taxes in a very respectful, civil...
Right. Stern. I, I call it stern manner.
Yeah, exactly. So that, that's the objective here.
And if you have payments, and, and, and a lot of people have payments, uh, just like you as, as, as supervisors who are interested in your constituency, we did a huge amount of medical collections. Well, they want that person to come back to the hospital. So they don't want us blowing him out of his seat, threatening him and doing anything like that.
Right, right.
But as far as your payment plans go, you might have all of those lined up and monitored. Uh, that, that's what we found where people have payment plans. Well, then make one one month, and their next payment is due six months from then. That's not, it, it, in my opinion, a good payment plan if they're not a Biden one. And that's, that's what has to be. They're the things that we see when we go to, to different offices of, of collections. Oh, well, they're on a payment plan. I don't know when they'd last pay.
Right, right.
You some...
And I think it's also, the county wants to make clear, or the board wants to make clear, the county does need the tax money to pay...
Yeah, I was under the impression it was close to a million, something, something, something like that.
I mean, we, we have obligations here that we need the money. It's not like this is extra stuff.
And every little bit helps, and, and for sure. And a good, solid system will help collect the money. It will help the treasurer and, and help, help the county collect the taxes.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure that there, there are certain people who may be fearful that, that, that there's some intent to go after those people for, you know, criminal offenses, and that is not the intent here. This is all a civil matter of procedure and doing business in a businesslike manner.
And if they make a good faith, um, good faith effort to pay their taxes, they'll never have to...
Exactly. And communicating with the treasurer's office or the revenue office is the first step to doing that, staying in touch with them, right?
Any other questions or comments? Bill, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to come meet with us.
Thank you.
And your desire to potentially work with us on a committee later on.
Okay.
Appreciate it. All right. Mr. Walker, appropriation resolution for fiscal year twenty twenty.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We've actually spruced up our appropriations resolution a little bit over last year. Worked with Heather and had a couple of options to choose from. And I've got two options in front of the board, but real quickly before I present those, wanted to talk about some of the nuances and the changes. Once, this is an, well, one, this is an actual appropriation resolution. She had the wheras and the usual accoutrements in the document. One significant change that I do want to point out, in years past, we've always assigned fund balances or set aside accounts within our unassigned fund balance account. This appropriation resolution actually sets those up as specific reserve funds, again, within the general fund, but they're appropriated from the unassigned fund balance by resolution. What that means is we've always accounted for them separately, but in order to use those monies for any other purpose, we'd have to come back to the board and say, hey, we'd like to dip into this fund or transfer these funds back and forth. These, this appropriations resolution actually sets them aside in their own reserve categories. And within the, both options on appropriations resolution, you have the four reserve funds that we have, or set aside funds, as I referred to them. We have, as Mr. Kimbrough mentioned earlier, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is set aside for dredge, dredging of the formerly, formerly maintained by the Corps of Engineers Creeks. Uh, you have a reserve fund of forty thousand dollars for unsafe structure removal. If we, uh, find someone and they won't remove an unsafe structure, there's a little bit of money in the reserves to remove their structure for them and then bill them accordingly. We have the election equipment reserve fund at thirty thousand seventy-one. And I would like to point out, these are the fund balances at the end of this fiscal year, fiscal year nineteen. This will appropriate them from the unassigned fund balance. And last but not least, we have the reassessment reserve that we have set aside forty-five thousand dollars in years past to, of ninety thousand dollars. You'll find that in the second, or excuse me, the fourth to the last paragraph on both resolutions. So by resolution, this would appoint those set aside funds, in a sense, from the unassigned fund balance, and we would be, um, maintaining them accordingly. Uh, the other difference is the reason you have two appropriation resolutions. We have one option that would lump sum fund the school system. And then that's option one. That's the first appropriation resolution you have in your packet. And we have the second option, which is the second appropriation resolution, which would continue to categorically fund the school system across their several categories that make up their general fund. Uh, we worked with the school board office. They get their final budget numbers from us, and they break those numbers down by category, uh, and then get us the numbers back. And we, again, done that in this categorically funded budget. Um, what's the difference between the two options? Primarily, if you lump sum the school system, if you lump sum fund them, they can move monies between, say, technology, transportation, maintenance, administration, and, and instruction without coming back from, in front of the board to do a transfer. If you categorically fund them, in order for them to move funds between categories, they have to come back before the board of supervisors for reappropriation and transfer approval. That's essentially the main difference.
Don't we as a board have to approve our own transfers? Betty brings us these from time to time, so...
You do. That's correct.
I would certainly, uh, I would certainly think that we would all want to be held to the same level of accountability would be my, would be my thought on it.
I think it's also good to have them here, you know, and communicating, you know, if you're not in the schools all the time, it's good to have them back and have some communication to see them and, and they can inform us on certain things, which is good. And it, because you're still going to get the money, but it's just that, you know, I, I, they still will get the money one way or the other.
So what other departments should we start having categorically come and do transfers? Is that every single department?
In a sense, you have the appropriation of, by department now. So we have, say, for instance, board of supervisors, in a sense, is its own department. County administrators, its own department. In order for us to transfer funds between them, we have to come before the board now. So we actually have categorical funding of, of the county departments now.
Between two different departments?
Between two different departments.
But what about, like, the sheriff's department? What about Mike Hurd's office? What about the county clerk? Do each of them have to come every time they move something?
Between departments, yes, sir.
Okay.
So, Matt, just to make sure that I'm following this correctly, that if, if, from page sixty-eight, is the one that shows the categorical? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That, um, I'm on a screen, so I don't, I'm not, want to make sure I've got A option and B option. Am I clear on that?
So on your screen, on page sixty-eight, is the categorical option, and it would break the school general fund budget down by categories. And of course, there are instruction, administration, attendance, health, people, transportation, maintenance, and debt service. Of course, debt service is pretty much a standalone because we have to pay our debt services. And, uh, technology, those are the primary categories.
And this is the way it's being done now?
This, this is how it has been done here before.
Oh, in the past, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, when the schools come before us and are, um, like for an insurance payment, like the, the card that had to be replaced, that's coming through because that's an appropriation?
In addition to what was already appropriated in our budget. Uh, when we adopted their budget last year, we didn't know we were going to get a, uh, insurance reimbursement for wrecked vehicles. reimbursement for wrecked vehicles. So that's actually in addition to.
And that's why that's separate? And that really doesn't relate to this resolution?
No, ma'am.
So that would mean that the school is still going to be coming here aplenty, whether it's lump sum or categorized, because there's going to be unforeseen things like an insurance check, like we've had today. I mean, this does not portend that we'll see less of the school, and I think I could even speak for the school board, if we want to see them, they'll be here. So I don't think that's a real concern.
Yeah.
I, for one, am in favor of the lump sum. I mean, they're elected officials running that board. We don't have boards for every single department. And if you look at it, it's broken into six categories. I just, I think those in favor of smaller government would support maybe a little less transaction mess, and I think that's all that this is doing.
I'd also like to say, because we've got a system that's not broke, you know, why change it?
Well, I guess my question would be, like I said, if we have a system that's working, but who is it working for? And if it's working for the interest of the citizens, then I think that should be the question versus either us or even Betty, as much as I would like to elevate your things, or the school board or the school administrators. You know, simplifying things or doing things for our benefit doesn't, is not really what we should do. So if, if doing it the way we're doing it now with the categorical, if that is seen by the public as somewhat beneficial or informative, then I think we stick with it. If it's not, if it's just noise, then.
So, Matt, you're bringing this to our attention. Did somebody say it was broke?
No, we wanted to give the board an option this time because we were revising our resolution anyway, and we had really two good drafts. One good draft that lump sum, and it wasn't too difficult to continue to make that categorical. So we wanted to put the matter in front of the board, see if there was any desire on your part to make a change while we were changing the resolution.
Did you have a recommendation?
I think if you were to ask me for my recommendation, given the fact that we have a budget and finance committee made up of school staff, I think I would recommend we try lump sum funding one year and see how it works out.
So does this resolution state this in a way that it's reversible in one year?
It's entirely reversible every year. You just basically adopt a different type of resolution.
I would say that one advantage that I see to the categorical appropriation is that I think the amount of money that is in the instruction portion is very respectable. And when you're looking at a whole school budget, I think knowing that buildings and transportation plus a lot of money, this is one advantage. I like the fact that this shows 11.6 million in the instructional category.
But the resolution's not the only place you can find that information. You don't need to put it in a resolution. That's not really an argument for categorical, that's an argument for, I like that they break it up the way they break it up.
Well, but it's the only appropriation resolution. You can always go to the budget documents, but that's a lot more information. But yes, you're right, it's not hidden. I don't mean to imply it's concealed. I just like that it's visible. But I don't, I don't have any concern with the ability of the schools to allocate the money as it is appropriated, you know, for spending the money as it is appropriated. I'm just trying to think about, how does this work for the citizens? What's the best way from their point of view?
Well, I would like to address that because as the managers of the county, we've got fiscal responsibility right up at the top of our list of things that we're supposed to be doing. And I don't ever recall an appropriation request being voted down in the three and a half years I've been on the board. I think we've come to understand them, but it also helps me to keep my fingers on the pulse of where the money is, if we've got a little extra over here and we need to move it over here. And somehow, it makes me feel like a better manager of the county funds. And if it's good for the county, if it's good for us to do it as the administrators of the county, then I think it's perfectly good for the single largest funding agency of our county, which is the school system, to abide by the same rules. I just feel like what's good for us is good for them, and I don't mean an us-them thing. It helps me to keep my fingers on the pulse of how I think things are running, that money's good here, money's short there, we need to move it. Whereas if it gets moved, I'm not worried that somebody's going to move money and do it in an inappropriate way, it just might happen, so I didn't notice it, and then I'm less informed in trying to do my job. So, yes, ma'am. So we've got two appropriation resolutions before us. Basic difference between them being that the second resolution maintains the category and the first one lumps it. And the chair will entertain a motion to adopt a resolution.
And they didn't ask for it either way? And the school board did not ask for it either way?
Correct. Now, I will say, last year, the request was made, and I felt that with the huge tax increase that we had, and most of it going to employee salaries and so on and so forth, that that was not the year to do it, and they didn't hear anything else.
So if in the huge tax increase moment, it was not the time, and the logic follows that in the not huge tax increase moment, it is the time, or is that not the logic?
I can't connect those dots.
Here's black, here's white.
What is, what is the school board's thoughts on this, or do they have any input at all?
Well, I think if you ask the school board, they would probably ask for a lump sum. They haven't expressed any direct opinion one way or the other to me at this time.
Well, how did this, why did it come up there?
We had two options of resolution.
I was just saying, you know, you've got something that's working, and you know, why change it? And also, you may have people here that comes to our meeting that don't come to school board meetings. And it's letting people know what's going on in the transaction that's going on. And like I said, I look at some of these citizens out here, you know, they're probably not in the school board, some may, some may not. But you're getting some information from the school system. They may not have children in the school system, but they still want to know what's going on in the school system because they're taxpayers.
I'd like to put it off until next month, and no.
Ms. Mansfield, I would rather recommend we appropriate the budget this month because this will help the schools get contracts out.
I apologize.
One option or the other.
I didn't realize this would stop.
Yeah, we need to do something.
I'll go ahead and make the motion for the resolution for the category like it is.
Categorical funding.
Category of funding.
That would be the second resolution.
The second resolution.
Yeah. That's beginning on page 66.
Yep.
Yes. I'll second that. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I just, I think this is a furtherance of the message that we've started to send our schools, that we don't trust them, and I think we have to be careful.
I think, no, I don't agree with, I don't agree with that. That's your opinion.
I'm supposed to state my opinion.
Yeah, and that's your opinion, but who's saying that? You're saying that.
I'm saying.
None of us are saying that. None of us are saying that.
We're holding the schools to the same standards that we have.
Yeah, no, you may think that, but we're not saying that. You think that.
I'd like to go.
And that's your right, but I'm just saying, nobody here said we didn't trust the schools. We all trust the school system.
I'd like to go on the record that what I stated was my opinion.
And it's good, your opinion's good, but I'm just saying, that's your opinion. Yeah, right. And I'm glad, that's your opinion, but that's not our opinion. Nobody said what you said. John Coote said that, and put that on the record.
I spoke for myself, you spoke for the board, that's what just happened.
Right, yeah, I know that's what happened.
All right, we have a motion that's duly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I would say that the diligence that the board has put into the budget process, along with the finance committee and the schools' input, it's a long process, it's tedious, and the accountability, I think, is unquestionable. I think we just want, and my intent is for citizens to be aware of that in order to help them be supportive of the goals of the schools as well as for the board.
Well said. Well said, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the second resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Three ayes, one no, one abstention?
Oh, I was an aye.
You were an aye? Okay, so, for, the motion carries to keep the categorical funding for the schools. And I would like to follow up and restate, this is simply the same circumstances that the board, the accountability that the board holds itself to, and I just strongly feel like we ought to, if the citizens didn't care and didn't want us to be accountable, not to be accountable, but not to move money in a transparent way, then so be it. But that's not what I favor, and I appreciate this, the way we're doing it. So, okay, Cook's Corner renovation revitalization work order. Mr. Walker?
Yes, sir. We have asked our consultant engineer that we've retained on staff to give us a work order to begin work on the Cook's Corner office complex renovations. These are the renovations, the board may recall, are a part of our grant that we have underway with the Cook's Corner revitalization. What specifically this does is listed on your screen. This would be the engineering and the architectural services needed to develop plans and specs for the new windows at the MCPS offices and social services building, exterior improvements to the gymnasium, replacement of the gymnasium lights, and of course, the HVAC system repair and upgrade for not only the school board and social services office, but also the addition of air conditioning to the gym, which was all part of our revitalization plan for Cook's Corner.
The gym had not had air conditioning?
Does not have air conditioning. Window replacements and things of that nature included in this as well. I think the windows are original to the building, if I'm not mistaken, so it's part of it.
They've been replaced with plexiglass?
Oh, well, pardon me, they've been replaced with plexiglass. I won't say that that loud. So what this would do is get that work underway so we can potentially get this out for bid. I am told by the Department of Housing and Community Development, we can go ahead and bid this pre-going under contract for the grant funds because none of the allocated grant funding was going towards this project. These are local funds used to leverage those grant funds for other purposes. So we're in good shape getting this going. And just to remind the board, because I think Betty's staring at me wanting me to do so, I'm reading her mind, we had some air conditioning difficulties last August at the Cook's Corner office complex. And based on the Herculean efforts, John Blake and the guys, they kept it cool, but it's going to be hard pressed to try to get another sum around that air conditioning, the chiller unit.
We're crossing our fingers.
Yeah, we're crossing our fingers, crossing my toes as well. Cost of renting a chiller would be fairly significant. So we kind of hope to get this out for bid soon. And I would ask the board's authorization to execute this work order with our consultant engineer.
So moved.
Moved. Second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none. So ordered. Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
Free shade rental policy changes. Betty?
This had come before the board last month, along with the request to, from a business to rent free shade on a multi-weekend, several days throughout the summer, for business venture classes or something like that. And you asked the board, asked staff to go back and try to come up with some suggestions for how to incorporate, reduce rates for business use. So you have that before you draft revision to policy and then some suggested rates.
Those suggested rates, we've talked about in this meeting before.
There were several rates kicked around, I think at that meeting. I put in ones that Mr. Walker and you had suggested, full price for the first day, and then second event would be 25% off, and then 50% off, and 75% would be the max reduction.
And those reductions would be based on good experience, i.e. they're turning the lights off, locking the place, sweeping the floor and stuff. If any of those details fall through the cracks, then it goes back to full fare.
That's the understanding.
All of the, all of the other rules and use, you know, for use of the building remain the same.
So Pete, a good way of thinking about this, Pete, is a culmination of our thoughts with Betty, Susan, and Michelle's reality.
Right. I would like to move that we accept that, mainly because I love the idea of that building being used for appropriate purposes, and we're not trying to make a wealth of money off of it.
No.
What we're trying to do is make it a public building people can get without expending all their money, and if they use it well, then we want them to come back and use it as many times as they can. 25% is better than nothing.
Right, and, you know, we do have expenses for that building. We have cleaning and electrical.
Heat included.
Heat, you know, that the county incurs for that. And what I tried to put in here was, you know, we don't want businesses taking the building over as a place of business. This is more for an accessory use for their business.
Right.
For their own location, so I tried to put that in there.
Are we into discussion? Can I ask?
I don't think, we're just talking.
Do you need a second on that motion?
I'll second.
I didn't realize, you made that in the form of a motion.
Yeah.
I thought I did, but I'm willing to hold off and have more discussion. Okay, so we don't have a motion on the table?
We had a motion.
John seconded.
Motion duly seconded, now we're into discussion.
All right. Well, I have a question for Betty. Because what you said, Betty, about primary or accessory use, because I get that, and I noticed you added language to this, and it makes sense. What your intent, what you said makes sense. What's written here is a little bit confusing to me, and I thought maybe, not to micromanage this, but where it says for the facility to be substituted as the place of business for the business, perhaps as the primary place of business? Because if it's, if you're doing business, that's the place, right? Where you're doing business, if you're making sales. I just thought it was a little bit confusing. It's okay to have sales there.
Right.
But it's just not okay to have that your only place of business and.
Well, I can see sales as an associated use to a class.
Exactly.
But not to go set up shop there.
Got it.
Just for sales.
Does that make sense?
If you're asking, I mean, I think the suggestion by Swineheart, I think it would help to clarify the intent by saying primary place of business. Someone should then say, well, I'm trying to make it my secondary place, my third location. But it might help to clarify the intent a little more, if you'd like, that some language, maybe Betty and I can bounce back and kind of tweak it a little bit for clarity.
Or if the same people wanted to have a bake sale there every Saturday, that would probably not be a use that we're trying to encourage, I guess is what we're saying.
Can we vote down the motion and add primary? Can we, procedurally, can we do that? Can we just take the vote with that intent?
Sure.
I think that would cover what you're trying to do, and I think we're all pretty much in agreement, so I think we need to vote.
Yeah, because I agree with Pete, I think using the building is a good thing for the community, so.
Okay, so we'll substitute the word primary, and we'll use the chart on page 77 for the payment schedule. Would you like to put your motion back in motion? Oh, I'd like to withdraw my motion. You put that word in. Would you like to amend your motion? Okay, sure. So amended, do we have a second?
Heather.
Okay. So, it's withdrawn?
No, he amended it.
No, he amended it.
He amended it. Okay. All right. Sorry. I couldn't keep up.
Second to the amended motion. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So ordered. Thank you very much.
And just real quick, the board probably already knows this, but I want to state it for the record. You know, these are your policies. Y'all have complete license over what you can do with them, as long as it's legal, of course. Got to say that before Heather kicks me. But these are your policies. So, feel free to recommend any changes to any of them if you care.
Well, and I would ask staff to keep us informed. If rentals appear to be becoming what the spirit of this is not, then we'd want to know about it. But the door was open to this with a startup company that wanted to have workshops to show people how to do this and do that. And that's exactly what I think Mr. Mansfield's talking about, and that's what I support for the use. But if somebody wants to make this their center of sales for something every week, then I think that's probably not what we want it to be either.
But I think as much as we want to protect the place, we also want to hear if that startup decided, oh, the heck with it. I'm going to go somewhere else. Like, I'd like to know that we didn't disincentivize them to the point where they said, well, I won't use this public facility across the street from my Middlesex-based business.
Very good. Thank you. Item D, Crossroads Community Youth Home Residential Services Non-Secure Detention Budget Supplement/Transfer Request. Mr. Walker?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, we are here again to ask for a transfer request for our non-secure detention cost. Shortly after the last board meeting in April, we received a notice from the Crossroads that our pre-purchase days were almost up, and we have need of more. They graciously offered us the same deal at the same rate as they had before for us to pre-pay for days and thus save a substantial amount of money. So, we are here today to ask for a budget transfer request FY 2019-13 in your budget, hopefully the last time for our non-secure detention costs this year. They are relatively higher this year.
I move that we approve budget transfer request FY 2019-13.
I second. Motion duly seconded. Is there any discussion?
The only discussion I would offer is that we cannot guarantee that these costs will not continue to go up. And one of the things that we can do to address them is to support our education. This is one of the side costs.
Yep. No question. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So ordered. Thank you. Item E, Betty, you're going to talk to us about the Department of Historical Resources Cost Share Grant Liability Agreement.
Locality.
Locality.
I have a question before we get started. Who comprises the Middlesex County Historical Society? I do not know. That is the, that's the Middlesex Museum and Historical Society.
Okay. Because this document refers to that. And I wasn't aware of us having that body.
Right. That is a change that will be made to this.
Okay.
When this first came through, this is, the Historical Society is the group that the Board of Supervisors agreed to partner with for the survey of Saluda. And this is the agreement that goes along with that. The state is putting up their part of it. And this is the, the county was putting up the other six. And this is the agreement that goes along with that. I, when it was originally sent to us, it only had Middlesex County as being the responsible party for doing all the different work that was in here. And I got them to go back and add Historical Society. Apparently, I got that name wrong. So, it will be amended again to, say, the Middlesex County Museum and Historical Society. And they will be doing pretty much all the work. We will be just putting up the $6,000, which we've already agreed to after July 1. The expense for it won't come out until next year. So, we'll do an appropriation request to roll that money over.
So, would you like us to approve that agreement with the language change?
Yes.
To include the museums and not?
Yes, please.
Okay. This is on page 88.
88.
88 and 89.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
I saw a move. I make that motion.
Motion is waiting on a second.
Second.
Duly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So ordered. Thank you very much. County Attorney Updates. Heather?
Mr. Chairman, I do not have any update. We do have a question for clarification. You stated earlier about me reviewing the people. Is that something you're going to bring up at the June meeting? Is that my understanding of your statement?
I was going to bring it up, and it's already sort of come up. But I was going to bring it up in my supervisor comments for us to keep in mind and be ready to ask you to look at that ordinance and act on that in June.
Okay. I'll wait for you to make that discussion then.
Okay. Mr. Walker?
I do have a couple of items, Mr. Chairman.
The grinning Cheshire Cat over there.
Well, it's always down to me. And I know you want me to be brief, so I will be. I just wanted to make the board aware of a circumstance that the staff is dealing with. Our last remaining board member on the Central Middlesex Volunteer Rescue Squad has had substantial health issues lately. And there's been some difficulty in making sure certain payments were made on time. We had been transferring money to the Central Middlesex Volunteer Rescue Squad in order for them to make those payments. One in particular is the mortgage on the building. We contacted the bank today, and we can make that payment direct to the bank on the Central Middlesex Volunteer Rescue Squad's behalf. That's going to be my recommendation from here forward, being that this individual's had some pretty substantial health issues and may have some difficulty making sure those payments are made on time. I just wanted the board that we would be changing that slightly. Herefore, we have been transferring those monies to the Central Middlesex Squad. The organization's not running calls anymore, but they still have title of the building, and they were making their mortgage payment from that donation. We're going to be doing that directly from henceforth.
Very good.
That's all I had on that. Just as a quick reminder, we had, in your packet, you have a written report. There appears to be some very preliminary interest in some of the counties around us to potentially, and I got to put the buzzwords on this because this is very early in the game, potentially forming what's known as a regional airport authority built on and around Hummelfield. Wanted to bring this to the board's attention today to see what the board's least preliminary feeling on that potential would be before we move too vigorously with the state and some of the other counties to maybe develop a model and bring it back in front of the board for further consideration.
Well, Matt, you and I were at that meeting along with some representations from Virginia Department of Aviation and what other county? Lancaster and who else?
Lancaster and North Ullman County. And I think Matthews County was there in spirit.
Right. They have approached us with interest in regionalizing this airport. And this probably goes back to the possibilities of realigning and lengthening the runway to make it more usable, to make it more safer. And at any rate, it's exciting that this possibility is on the horizon. The Department of Aviation has made every appearance of being in favor of us being able to change our designation so that we can get construction funds in order to be able to do this. And I've got the very strong impression that a regional effort would check yet another box towards the Department of Aviation's approval of such a project. So, I was, I've got that in my comments later, too, so you get to hear part of it twice. But I was very, I was very pleased with the outcome of that meeting. And the, having other counties come to us with a regional thought is a very, very, very large plus. And I just want to, we want to be able to do things on a regional basis. And if we've got something that other counties want, and we can work together to make something better out of it, this supervisor's in favor. So.
Would they put any money into it?
That is a, the short answer is most likely yes. I think you'd look at it as buying a seat on, at the table. The authority, Middlesex and so the owners of the airport would have so many seats based on the fact that it's our airport. Then there would be donation. These are just possibilities. Betty's cocking her head.
Well, I was just saying, it wouldn't be our airport then.
I understand. But since that, since the, before the, before the authority acquired the interest in the airport, the source of the airport was from us, that that would put us in a position of having a certain number of seats. And then, I don't know, it could be based on any number of parameters. But there should be, in my opinion, financial responsibility across the board for that. So.
And if I may, that's why caveat the whole discussion with there was preliminary interest from counties around us. Because what usually happens is when you start talking money, preliminary interest dissipates.
What else do you have, Mr. Walker?
Was it just a general consensus of the board whether they want to at least preliminarily pursue that as an option?
As an authority, the airport would then not really be autonomous, because I believe we would still be appointing the members to the authority. But the authority would have decision-making abilities and borrowing abilities and things that the airport committee does not yet, does not have. The airport committee has to report to us, and then we have to make those decisions. An authority would be able to bypass that. Now, by bypass, it also puts the talent in the right place, because members of the authority would necessarily be people with knowledge and interest in aviation, which I'm the only one on the board that has firsthand with that. Everybody else, we've got interest. But I don't feel adequate a lot of times to make decisions that I think an authority could better make for us. So, I favor us continuing to keep our finger in the water and see if it warms up.
When is that building going to be moved?
I believe it's in the process of being dismantled now.
That's my understanding, too. I know there's some
It's been sold back and forth, too.
But you were asking for the board's view on
General consensus on whether you want to
So, I think Chip's been clear. You're looking for the other four?
Yes, sir.
Well, I think pursuing a preliminary makes a lot of sense. My concern about an authority is that protecting the access of the citizens of Middlesex County to the decision-making process.
I'm supportive.
I'm with that idea, with the thought.
So, we have general consensus to move forward with preliminary, because this could all fall apart. But the possibility remains that it could be an authority and just be Middlesex. It doesn't necessarily, authority doesn't mean it's a regional thing. It's just a
Matt, in your
Furtherance possibility.
In your update, number one, are you actually asking to authorize additional labor for John Blake to help with the move? Or you don't need to get that? What are you saying there?
We have approached a couple of handymen who have worked with John Blake from time to time on projects.
Sorry. And for the public, we're talking about the registrar office, planning, building, and zoning relocation within Saluda.
Yeah. And we may bring them on board temporarily to supplement staff. It's mostly a heads up, and it will come out of next year's budget.
And not to be a stickler, but when you say county achieved records, I assume that's archived?
Archived. Sorry.
It had to be achieved.
It was an achieved
It had to be achieved before they can be archived.
Fair enough.
I throw myself on the mercy of the board. I learned Southern in North Carolina, not England.
I wonder what you meant.
Susan, don't hesitate to call.
Even though it's misspelled, I do want to bring this up. And not to hold us much longer, but I do have to give special kudos to Susan Trainor, our deputy clerk, because she has almost unilaterally taken upon herself to go through all of those records that we stored downstairs and have moved them to our new storage facility at the new courthouse and have, she's created a system where you can actually find some. And it's amazing. And hat tip to her. She's really worked hard on that. And I told her, that alone has justified us hiring her. So, there you go. Thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
Even though it's misspelled. We'll fix that.
Well, you had to achieve it first.
I had to achieve it first.
Does that conclude your report, Mr. Walker?
I dare not say another word.
All right. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Any new business to come before the board?
I have one thing I'd like for us to consider. Maybe there's, you know, it merits some thought. But we're reserving $40,000 a year for unsafe structure removal reserve. I don't know that we've done anything with that in years. And I've talked to some other localities where when a structure starts looking so terrible that you know it's impacting surrounding property values, the county tries to make some notice and step in. And at some point, if they're not responded, responsive, isn't that what this fund is for? For really egregious properties that are just being let go?
That's my understanding. Go in there with a bulldozer, knock it down, and make a lien against the real estate and move on.
I can give you a little history on it, when this all was implemented. At first, they said that the building inspector was involved, as you know. And then they said, if you had an old structure, if you boarded up so nobody go in, you wouldn't have any, you know, problem with anybody getting hurt. And the ones that a roof are down, falling down, then that's something you can really do. But what it did, I'm just letting you know that a lot of the older structures, you have family, and basically, a lot of the minority families, they move away. They have homes there, and nobody, they pay the taxes. And they board them up. And they did that. So, that's what it was all about. But now, when you get in there and you're going to tear the house down and then charge somebody, and you got so many, if you look at the relatives and everything like that, it's so hard to get them all together. But somebody, one of them are always paying the taxes on these old houses. Now, the building inspector will go in the ones that are dangerous. And that's what, that was all about during that time.
So, it's focusing on the ones that are dangerous?
Dangerous house. Right, right. Now, you have some out here that may have, some of them are grown up, and, but they still have a metal roof and it's standing.
Right.
You know, and that's something, family members will have to get together. And at the time, the board felt that, you know, why should we take these families and say, we're going to tear your house down? And then, I don't know when you're going to get the bill out. I don't know how you do it, because, you know, it's generations of different people that not doing them, but one of them are paying it. But you got to, it's a long process of going.
I remember the discussion. And it was, if you could board the windows up and board the doors up so that nobody can get in there and hurt themselves, then the county's satisfied.
Right.
But if you get into something that is physically falling down and can't be secured, that's where this comes into play.
What if you have a tree that has grown up through the roof, and people are playing with the tree?
I guess that, that's what I'm saying. I don't want to be disrespectful to those that think that, you know, that's a perfectly good use of their property. It's their property. But at some point, it does have an impact on how our community looks when you're coming through, whether it's the Poole or Highway or Twigs Ferry. I mean, I know on Twigs Ferry, there's a building there where, I mean, that roof is like this. I mean, it's pancaked. And there's been no sign of anything. And there's trees growing up through it and everything else. And it's, you know, is that maybe a more viable use if that person is compelled to put it up to the market? And, you know, that should be their choice. But when you're having an impact on the rest of the community and property values because you've chose to do nothing but pay a really small amount of property tax from a faraway part of the country, it doesn't seem like you're invested beyond 62 cents per hundred dollars in the community. And for those of us that live here, and, you know, I just got my house appraised, and I'm down 15% in the six years I've lived here. I look around and I ask, well, am I doing enough in my community? I think, you know, some would say no. Some would say I'm doing too much. But the point is, I think if we have something in the budget and we have some particularly egregious properties out there that are never going to be reused. I mean, there's no, and you know from construction, there comes a point where you're not bringing the thing back. I think we should look at why we're not using that. And if there's compelling reasons why we aren't using that $40,000 a year, then why are we budgeting for it? But if there are compelling reasons to use it, I can come up with some properties in Hartfield that I think would be good test cases.
Well, safety is the key word to the ordinance as we pass it. And if a property owner's responsible enough to board it up so that a child's not going to go in there and get hurt, then I think that's not what the $40,000 was originally aimed at. Now, should it be? That's a whole other argument. But this is the way it was outlined. But there are plenty of structures in the county. And I drive past one of them every single day, two times, that is falling in, and it's very unsafe. And those are things that I would like for us to have this contingency fund for, because, and I know citizens are addressing this particular
I don't mind it being based in safety. I mean, but I think so many of these have gotten to the point where gotten to the point where there's a safety issue, and maybe we pick one that's just, I don't know if you can pick one, I don't know what legally you can do to use this, like, what is the process? If I'm the supervisor from Hartfield, and I can identify sixteen buildings that are unsafe, and I bring that to who?
Building inspector.
Yes.
So I bring that to the building inspector?
A formal written complaint is needed based on our current code.
Okay.
And then from there, there's a process that we'll go through, which will most likely require court action. The way that you collect these monies is, will be a tax lien if we obtain our judgment. So what I'm hearing is, maybe what would be helpful, because I'm not, I would like to review our current ordinance and a couple of the code sections that are relevant, I'd be happy to prepare a short memo, kind of giving you an outline of how that process would work. I'd be happy to do that for the board, if that would be helpful.
I'd like that, and, you know, just so that in town halls, I can sort of socialize that, because if it's just me that thinks this, well, that's worth this, but if there's others that, and I have had people talk to me about this, you know, why do we just let those things rot?
Yeah. One of the things that concerns me is, we're trying, we try and be very specific, the doors have to be boarded up, windows not accessible, but if there's a tree growing through the roof, there's nothing in our code that says that that's a bad thing.
Right, that has to do with the building code.
And, I mean, it's obviously it's a bad thing, but, but our code does not say, say that, so, you know, I hate to say, the less specific you are, and you attorneys know all sorts of good words for.
Well, so it sounds like maybe it'd be good if I do a memo, kind of going over the process, but if something, if you want to make revision to address a tree growing through a roof.
It's more property maintenance.
Well, yeah, then we would need to have a fruitful discussion on revising your building code ordinance, because you are, because that's what we're, that's what you're getting at.
And we've, we've talked about that several times, and heretofore, it hasn't been the board's desire to take on that aspect of the state building code, which deals with property maintenance issues. I mean, it's entirely possible for the county to start regulating the length of grass that's allowed to grow on properties, but it will require substantially more effort and probably more staff to enforce.
It would require more staff. There's no probable about that, I would say very affirmatively, if that's.
I feel like there's a translator needed between the two, because I don't think what Pete, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think Pete's talking about, you know, your azalea bush out in front, I think he's talking about with the collapsed roof, with just enough boarding hanging on the windows, that rather than wait for the boards to fall off so he can say it's unsafe.
I understand.
He wants to point to the tree that's been growing there for twenty years.
We can look into it.
Let's let Heather bring us back a report on reviewing the ordinances as they're written, and see if what we're talking about is incorporated, or whether we need to make some amendments to get them incorporated.
And you also, you also have to, Mr. Chairman, you also have to be concerned about the neighbors. They have a right not to be living next to a house that is, I want to, I want to say dangerous, because I really believe that it is dangerous, even though the doors are maybe.
Well, I think Heather's analysis will bring us to a point of deciding whether we're, whether we're addressing that or not, and if we're not addressing it and we want to, then I think we, we need to do some, do some amendments. Is that good enough? Because I'm not, I'm a little bit unclear myself, we had a lot of discussion about this eighteen months ago, I think, and a lot of that, a lot of that has escaped, because as soon as you said tree through the roof, all of that came back to me.
Yeah, with the tree through the roof, that means that the roof was unsafe, and you'd have to, you know.
Yes, but there is no such ordinance that says you will not have a house with a tree growing through the roof.
Well, I think on Heather's analysis, we can figure out if there's something we need to tweak to get that covered, if that's the will of the board.
Just to be complicated, I did design a treehouse with a tree growing through the roof.
Well, so my question is now, is that considered an improvement on your property, on your real estate? So, would, if it would be appropriate, I'd like to know how our real estate tax treats a property, because I'd rather see if we, if we're seeking to make a change, an improvement, I'd like to see an incentive versus, you know, some sort of action.
Or remove your structure, the improvements go on, your tax bill goes.
Exactly.
And to that point, too, I'd like to better understand, are they still being, are they paying just for the land, or does that structure value go to zero by assessing?
I think until they get a demolition permit, the structure stays untaxable.
Actually, no, I think we had that discussion the last time we looked into it, in some cases, the assessed value of the property removes the value from the structure, even if it's still standing like a tree going through the roof in some cases.
Which basically means they're paying only sixty-two cents per hundred on the land, which is dirt cheap.
There were some examples of that.
So they're spending sometimes forty and eighty dollars to be able to hold on and do nothing.
Right, so there should be a way in the tax code to incentivize some standard on the property in terms of safety, or whatever the criteria is.
Well, and again, this is all based on memory from, this may have been the time before we looked at it, but from my understanding, the commissioner and treasurer, well, the commissioner sets the values, they don't have to take a value down to zero on a building or structure until such time as demolished and gone.
Right, but don't have to and aren't are two different things, and I'm just curious if part of why we're seeing so many dilapidated buildings untouched is because they're taxed so low that, you know, if it's eighty dollars to do nothing and hold and wait till water and sewer infrastructure are paid by the people that live there, I'll watch my property go up in value, I'll take that lottery ticket on the backs of all the people that are paying more significant taxes.
Well, let's let Heather's analysis look at us from this point, because we really, we're saying, well, we might like to do this, and we don't know whether we can or not, and let's find that out, and Heather, if that wouldn't be asking too much to be able to report back to us in your remarks next one.
No, 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 that's my job, I'm happy to do it, but just to be clear, so that I know what I'm supposed to be doing, I'm going to work on giving the board some guidance on our current unsafe structure ordinance, how it works, what the process would look like, and how we could actually use those funds if we so chose to, review whether or not it would address a tree growing through a home, and we don't mean a children's treehouse or an adult's treehouse, we mean an actual unsafe structure with a tree through the home. Do you also then want me, I don't know that I can have this all by June, but then do you also want me to look into the tax question, Ms. Weiner, I can try and incorporate, ask the commissioner's office how they treat a dilapidated structure with tax value?
I would like that.
Okay.
I would, too, because I really, to give tax relief without demolishing the property is a disincentive to ever demolish the property, and I, I think we want to keep, as Kathy said, I think we want to keep good monetary incentives in place for people to keep their property in the proper fashion.
Not to add to your list, if you're doing any research with the commissioner of revenue or treasurer's office in terms of how they're taxing a building that's falling down, try to understand the consistency to which they're applying that, I mean, that's kind of the hard part, you know, because at some point, what to one person looks like a dilapidated building to another person could be a fixer-upper, and that may be one of the places where those offices are struggling and saying, well, no, I see value in that, and, well, no, that's a total knockdown, and, you know, and then you've got the assessor's opinion as well, so there's, there's some complexity there, but I think it's worth investigating.
One nuance to all of this, I want to make sure the board understands, our building inspector currently has some family medical issues that he's dealing with, and maybe coming back to work in the next couple of weeks, we're not a hundred percent sure depending on what we find out, and that may put a wrinkle in Heather being able to work with the building office on some of the code work, if she has questions back before. Just want to caveat that.
And surrounding localities have been helpful with mutual aid.
They have been very helpful.
Pitching in and helping us during a period of time that David's been out.
Yep.
Any other new business to come before the board? All right, we'll go with supervisors' comments and reports, and how about ladies first?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I can actually remember doing something besides the budget during May, but I did need to my notes. I continue to serve on the community programs management team, and I just mention that because there's a lot of work being done to make sure that our social services in terms of children's services and things are done, and that there's accountability, and I just want to commend that, and also considerable efforts to provide better services closer to home at a better price is an ongoing effort, and I'll leave it at that, but there's a lot of work being done, and I congratulate the people who are investing in that, and doing a good job, and Rebecca Morgan taking a lead on that in some respects. Okay, dockside open house, very nice, people in Middlesex need to know, there's a beautiful rehabilitation center available to us right here, so all your relatives can come and visit you very easily for short-term or long-term stays. The other thing I wanted to note, terrific concert a couple weeks ago by Sherman Holmes, one of our own, in fact, a Harmony Village, not just Middlesex. And, yeah, notice that, John.
Where's Harmony Village?
The heart and center of the county.
Oh, my gosh.
Here we go again.
Jack is going into all of them.
But I mentioned that because they're not the only ones, but Holly Point, our library, terrific, successful bake sale where people were making donations, they do, our organizations do a lot to raise funds themselves, so the organizations that come to us and at budget time, it's just important to know, they don't just sit back there raising the money for new doors or whatever it is. And was glad to be attending the Pride of Middlesex. VACO, Pete and I went to a regional meeting, just want to note, other counties, when asked to say, you know, what's your, what's your deal, or what's your concern, roads came up, and the, the lack of width on roads, including in counties that have a lot more traffic than we do, and I'm thinking, regionally, this should be something that we keep at the top of our delegate and our senators' state, our needs, is, it's not just, we don't need a new road, we need a wider road, and we all have had that experience of squeezing by. The development proposals, there were other people that, good things possibly happening in terms of the property at the north end of the county, the former boy scout camp, and along with events, there is a habitat-related meeting, and I do know that three of us are planning to attend, so just for the record, that's on May tenth. It's a, you know.
It's probably before.
It's not a business meeting.
It's probably before I was there.
Okay, so, anyway, just for the record, planning commission, I've attended that meeting, and I attended a meeting of the ordinance committee, and there'll be another meeting of planning commission this Thursday, but just to put it on your radar, the planning commission is, is looking at the board of supervisors being more involved in permissions in terms of zoning, particularly related to solar, and so that's just something to think about, to talk about.
Mr. Justice?
Yep, some overlap with Kathy, and I'm sure we all have some of that, but also, was it the Pride of Middlesex with Rotary celebrating Carlton Revere, it was a fun event. I also.
Who else saw that event?
They're having trouble finding somebody to fill that spot. I also took a break on April fifteenth, tax day of all days, and I paddled the dragon for the first time, so I felt, I felt like I covered the west end of the county and did my little patrol down there, and I can't wait to do it again. April twentieth, we had a Habitat for Humanity concert fundraiser, I'm hoping it's the first of many, we actually held it on the stage of the home that's under construction and had local bands playing. I continue to work on the broadband authority, we're expecting to hear back on our application to River County's Community Foundation within the next week or so. If that comes back favorable, or even if it doesn't, we're going to try to stand up an affordable loan to go into communities that are underserved, we have two targeted, one is thirty-one passes, as they say in the broadband industry, which basically means a home or business, a potential customer, but we have Atlantic Broadband basically saying, we're willing to pay a certain amount for that new customer, but these are, these are customers that currently are out of the money, to get that line in front of those thirty-one customers, it's more than twelve hundred dollars a customer, so we're going to those customers and we're going to say, here's how much extra we need if you all participate, here's how much if half of you participate, here's how much if only one of you participates, but what we're trying to do is grease the skins with a low-interest loan, not a grant, but because what we've heard is it can increase your property value anywhere from ten to twenty percent, not to mention what it does to have broadband in the home from an educational and entertainment standpoint, so that's what we've been working on, and we really look forward to being able to find out if we can say we did that with grant funding, even though it's a loan program. Had a meeting with the Middle Peninsula Regional Security Center, as we do about every other month, we had to raise our budget numbers by seventy thousand dollars roughly. What they are finding at the Regional Security Center is the nurses, of which they need seven, to be able to fully staff from five AM to midnight, they currently have three, and that number's gone down dramatically in the last couple of months. When we compete in the free market, what they're finding is those nurses are able to get paid more to be in a non-jail environment and have less patients, meaning less patients to tend to, not less patients, but, so we had to raise their salaries, and, you know, the superintendent and his staff do an amazing job watching the pennies and the nickels and the dimes, and they really were almost hat in hand, saying, we just, we didn't realize how bad this was getting, and we should have done something a while ago, so we had to, as a board, look at a step function jump to make sure that we could even compete, and we're not even sure that that's going to do it, but it's a really good example that, you know, it's not that we just go without those four nurses and we save some money, and we're actually paying some eighty thousand dollars more in contract nursing that's bringing in nurses from far and wide, not necessarily local jobs, but it's not saving us any money. So, having a longer view there, I think, is important, and so we made that correction, and I'll update through tomorrow, tomorrow morning, we're putting siding on the Habitat House, so anybody that wants to join us out in Harmony Village, right on the border of beautiful Hartfield District.
Lucky you, of course.
Mr. Justice?
I attended the Oshfus Foundation meeting, we discussed about sponsorship, they're dealing with the sponsors to get in, and then I also attended the Blue Water information that they had down at the Water and Fire Department, and it was very well-attended. I think one of the biggest problems going to be the road, that transportation road, I think if they can find another route, it would be very beneficial to the citizens on that, on that route. Also, I also attended the groundbreaking ceremony for the St. Paul Baptist Church that was burnt off the county there, they're going to be breaking ground in a few months after they get all the permitting and different things. I also attended the PDC, and some of the agenda items that was discussed was the media program with the whip program, and also, and flood presentation, and adoption of resolutions to support the flood proposal of Department of Conservation, and I'm just getting some headlines that we did, because it's a long meeting when we go through, we updated Middle Peninsula All-Hazard Mitigation Plan, and also, it was discussed about the Go Virginia MPA Board that discussed by Billy Beal, the Go Virginia Regional Chairman. And I also attended the Heritage Committee, dealing with the old agricultural building, and with some of the members, they were, when the governor came, they were kind of disappointed, because nothing was said about the Heritage Committee, and also, some of the members of the Middlesex Foundation, with nothing really mentioned, and, you know, and it all surrounded about, you know, the history of the old agricultural system, agricultural building, and they were just a little disappointed, and from now on, when you have anything, make sure that they're involved, because it's all about the Coast Corner Complex, revitalization, and the things that go on in that section of the county, and they let me know that they were very disappointed, because nobody was represented on the stage when it happened. And I did tend the dockside, that was all very well, the new rooms were very nice that they added on, and that is all for my committee reports.
Mr. Bass, please.
Yes, thank you. Unfortunately, I attended two memorial services in the last couple of weeks. One was Chauncey Mayne, who a lot of us really respected. The other was Roy Bowman, who was greatest storyteller ever, and I really enjoyed that. Well, you don't enjoy a memorial service, but.
Appreciate it.
He was quite a person. He was quite a person. I also went to a resilience funding forum, a discussion of innovative options for coastal localities. And quite frankly, it was very concerning to me. And I've asked to have a chart, but you might find that this is, you've probably seen better prepared graphs in this, but I want you to really look at what, what we're saying in there. In the year 1900, and these are just approximate numbers, because apparently, we don't have exact numbers, but in 1900, we know we were less than point one of an inch rise in sea level. And 120 years later, this year, we were up to, to almost four tenths, that's almost half an inch per year of sea level rise. Now, that's, you, you see the point. Right under 220 or something, 2020, the point four, that's where we are today. And on top of that, we have land subsidence, which I think most people know what land subsidence is. A lot of people move it in with sea level rise, because that's what happens, is the land drops, it's like the sea coming up more, or the ocean's coming up more. And that is point one-six inch this year. The land subsidence, I've made this point before, and I guess I'd like to make it one more time. We have to stop throwing away 20 million gallons per day of our drinkable water to make paper with. And actually, that number is more like 40 million gallons per day, if you look at the Franklin Mill and the West Point Mill. It's just, it, it's just not right to spend our potable water in this manner. And not only lose our potable water, but see, along with losing our potable water, more sea level rise, which is, for instance, I, I live on the water, I've lived on the water for 20 years, I have now raised my dock six inches so that it doesn't, water go over my dock once a week. All the docks around me, once every week or two, we have slightly high water, and it goes over the docks. Think of the billions of dollars that our state has got to lose, is losing due, due to this, these, this problem. That's all. Thanks for the opportunity to give you this good news.
Thank you, sir. My comments, getting back to B-Pole, which we talked about a little earlier, there are, there appears to be some differences in the application of our ordinance as far as enforcement is concerned, and I'd like for my fellow supervisors just to be considering the comments from Mr. Cawthorn, the comments that, that I'm making, and perhaps be prepared next month, in the June meeting, to ask Heller to, to review these ordinances with the idea that we'll have a new commissioner revenue in January, and we'll want to make sure that where collections are concerned, that we're all reading off the same sheet of music and not expecting somebody to do something that they're not expecting to do. So, that's what I'd like for you to keep in mind, and hopefully, we can take a vote and ask her to do that next month. One other thing, Matt and I have talked about, and it gets back to collecting taxes, I don't know when we've done reassessments in the campgrounds. I know that we've got trailers that are 1999 Voyager, somewhere or another, and we're taxing it based on some book value of that, but if you go into the campground, the rooms added on to it, decks and all sorts of things, which probably increase the value. And I would just like, I would feel better, as we look at taxes and as everybody paying their fair share, in looking at this with an assessor sometime after the first of the year, but just to, just to make sure that everybody's paying their fair share. I also went to the Dockside Grand Opening, I was, we were all, let's see, Pete and Wayne and I were on the front end of this thing, where we went and lobbied to, to get the legislature, because Tappy Hahnick was in the office to get those beds, and we worked hard to get the, to get the state to approve those 30 extra beds, which translates, not just 30 more people, but that translates to 30 more jobs in the county, from administration all the way down to groundskeeper. So there's 30 additional jobs because of that addition, and it's a beautiful facility, and if you haven't been down there, I know that they'd love to let you come down and take a little look around, so I would encourage you to do that. Matt and I also met with the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission Consultant, which is the Berkeley Group, on the viability of multi-use paths throughout the county. I found them to be very encouraging, they agreed that this is what our tourists of today and in the future are going to be looking for, and they were very, very encouraging about us moving forward with that. So, we're just in the planning and preliminary stages, but I'm, I'm excited about it, and it sort of started 34 years ago, when I moved to Delteville. We've got, if you haven't ever gone the stretch from the marinas up to about the rescue squad building, you have not taken your life into your hands yet, because I feel very comfortable in my deuce and a half making that trip, but anything else, bicycle or walking, I don't want to be doing that. So, I'm excited about that, and all of the other supervisors had that on their wish list, the things that they wanted to see done in their jurisdictions, as we went over, as our call, don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but as we talked about our budget considerations moving forward, so I find that to be very exciting. I held my first town hall meeting, I think it was well-attended, I want to thank staff and everybody for coming out and supporting me and answering some of the questions that I couldn't answer. Both Tracy and Karen were there, I'm sorry, they're not still here, so I can thank them again, but we had a, had a good meeting, good citizen input, and it's the sort of thing that encourages me to do another one, citizens have said they'd like to have one every three or four months, so that's what I will try to do. Also went to Pride of Middlesex, honoring Carlton Revere, and the meeting with the Virginia Department of Aviation on the concept of a regional airport authority. So, that pretty well covers my waterfront for the, for the month. I would ask, we're getting ready to go into closed session, for the convenience of the public and the press, do we expect to have any actionable items coming out of that? Hearing none, there's, you're welcome to hang around and watch us adjourn if you'd like to, but there will, there will be nothing actionable coming out of our meeting. So, with that, we entertain a time honored-
I move that we enter closed session, or does it have to be more than that?
Yeah, it does.
Keep trying.
Thirty-seven point whatever.
Mr. Chairman, you're going to have a public comment after the-
Yes, there, excuse me, there will be a public comment period immediately following, if somebody has something that they would like to address and want to wait around.
And it should be approximately 30 minutes.
Okay, about 30 minutes.
It could be less, but-
If John and I have anything to say about it, it will be less.
Is it appropriate to change the agenda to have public comment before that, or is that not-
It's up to you all. Can you amend the agenda?
Yeah. Would you all, would you all like that? We can amend the agenda, and, and if you have public comment, go ahead and make it now, and then you don't have to hang around. So, I will-
I will move that we change the agenda to move the public comment period.
Ahead of the closed session.
Yes.
I will, I will second make sure that the public that's here knows that I was the one that seconded that.
God bless you.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed.
Been a while since I made a public comment here. My name is Clark Waring, and I live at 38 Winwood Watch in Saluda. First of all, I might take over the, a lot of time, and I did some support from out here for what I'm-
Very good. You all realize that you can't speak, he can speak for you.
Beg pardon?
Just wanted to make sure that they knew that they were giving up their three minutes so that you could have yours for 12.
Okay. I'm here to speak about the construction of additional solar farms in Middlesex County. First, they are not farms, they are an experiment that require hundreds of acres of land per site filled with PV panels, and they destroy the pastoral look of the county. They do not give the county the rural look you claim to want in Middlesex. Does the alleged benefit outweigh what we give up? It's Genesis Al Gore and his theory about global warming and the carbon footprint. This has now evolved into a movement called climate science. This is not settled science, I will provide evidence. The solar farm industry here has been subsidized by us, the federal and Virginia taxpayers, and these projects have been inefficient and a blight on the countryside. Let me start by referring you to an article, "Our Planet is Not Fragile," by Walter Williams of George Mason University. In this article, Williams points out outrageous apocalyptic predictions that have been made by environmentalist Harvard University Professor George Wall in 1970 predicted civilization will end within 15 years. Stanford University Professor Paul Ehrlich predicted that England would not exist in the year 2000. Professor Williams then points out natural cosmic events that exceeded any destructive power of mankind. Example, geophysicists estimate that just three volcanic eruptions in 1883, 1912, and 1947 spewed more carbon dioxide and sulfur dioxide into the atmosphere than all of mankind's activities. Williams points out that mankind cannot come close to matching nature's destructive force or making significant parametric changes. Then there's climatologist Pat Michaels. The Cato Institute Center for the Study of Science Director and former Virginia climatologist and Cato Institute scholar states that models have been tuned to predict the nearly point five degrees centigrade warming from 1910 to 1945. He also points out the federalization of science and political process in color scientific literature. Then there is "A Funny Thing Happened on the Way to Global Warming" by Stephen Hayward of Pepe Thine University. His conclusion is that decades from now, history will look back on the hysteria of climate change today the way we look back on prohibition. And then from Forbes Magazine dated April 11th, 2019, a quote, "Over the last year, the media have published stories about the declining prices of solar panels and wind turbines. People who read these stories are understandably left with the impression that the more solar wind energy we produce, and the lower, the lower the electrical prices should become." And that is not what is happening, in fact, it's opposite. Electricity prices increased 24% in California during its solar energy build-out from 2011 to 2017. Then there's Mark Perry of the American Enterprise Institute, professor of economics and finance at the University of Michigan. He gives us an inconvenient energy fact. For one worker in the coal industry, there are 40 in natural gas, 79 in solar. Bottom line, the goal of the America's energy sector isn't to create as many jobs as possible, especially in the politically favored and heavily subsidized renewable energy jobs, rather, the economic goal is to produce as much electric power as possible at the lowest possible cost. And that means we want the fewest number of energy workers. It is a common mistake of politicians and media to treat jobs as an economic benefit, when in fact, jobs are an economic cost of production. As Milton Friedman explained, the appropriate economic objective is to have the fewest number of workers producing the greatest amount of output. When it comes to solar energy, we are imploring a very large number of workers to produce a very small amount of electric power. A sure sign of economic inefficiency. Conclusion. Conclusion is that the public, the public receives little or no benefit to building solar farms, that they have no effect on the climate change, and the cost of electricity keeps rising. They are a blight on the landscape, making the neighboring real estate values decline. It is also a possibility that new technology could render solar farms obsolete sooner than expected, and then are abandoned. Or they could be abandoned for some other reason, and then the cost of cleanup becomes a liability unless a reclamation bond is in place. And what happens if the responsible party has declared bankruptcy? Our taxes are being used to support this questionable industry while possibly creating an unfunded liability. Until solar farms can compete in the free market without being subsidized by the state and federal governments, and prove to be beneficial to the consumer, they are a bad investment in our community, and they do not inspire a return trip to Middlesex County for those who visit to enjoy the rural atmosphere and the recreational opportunities our, our county offers. I have a couple of other things. There, there is, I believe, a member of the Board of Supervisors who has a solar business or solar interest, and I would think he would want to recuse himself on any of the decision-making process. And I want to point out that you, you have, I think you have a, let me, let me find it here, I want to make it right. If I can't, I'll, I'll just send it to you, but you have a, well, I don't have it, but you have a Code of Ethics that's, is published, and I want you to look at it and just make sure you want to follow the Code, Code of Ethics. And I also want to mention that I do have a petition going on, and we have approximately 200 signatures right now, with, in the process of collecting more. And people, I think, want to make their own decision in their own district while a solar farm goes in their backyard, because it does have a big impact on their life and on their real estate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other citizens wish to address the board in the public comment period? Dan?
I gave up, I'm speaking.
Well, there's five of you there, so we'll give you some latitude.
Actually, what I want to say is, is that I would like to congratulate the board.
Oh, come on up.
Give him six minutes.
Automatic waiver of time limit.
Dan Adams, I'm in Hartfield, Virginia, in the Harmony Village District. We have a road that goes by our house that's split between the two districts. The Harmony Village District Supervisor has tried to help us, maybe make the shoulder a little wider, cut down some trees when they overhang, Joyce has been involved, and that's an ongoing process. But the conversation that you guys and ladies had here today about the issues that were brought forth by Matt was absolutely fantastic. I have said to probably thousands of people in the last 27 years, and before that- I have said to probably thousands of people in the last 27 years, and before that, Middlesex County in its history has been probably one of the most transparent government bodies with the Board of Supervisors that I have ever experienced. And that was proved here today. People really do respect the fact that you're transparent. However, it's some of the people's fault we're not getting off of this and coming to talk to you, to call you, to email you. I have in the past given out many phone numbers, some of them home phones, and I'm not sorry for that, because I encourage people to come and talk to you. But the more you can get out to talk to those people, especially right now in this campaign season, is very valuable. So for that, I'll say thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Any other citizens? Seeing none, I will declare the public comment period closed, and Heather, if you would do the, I'll call that the BR 549 resolution.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, we need a motion from the board to convene in a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A3 and A8. That is specifically for the board's discussion and/or consideration of the disposition of publicly-held real property, where the discussions in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, and in addition, to have consultation with legal counsel regarding said disposition of publicly-held real property.
Someone's second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, noted.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, we need a motion from the board, excuse me, we need a motion to certify the following statement from the board. To the best of the members' knowledge, all in public business matters lawfully exempted in the motion by which the closed session was called was considered and/or discussed in the closed session.
Salute. We have a motion and duly submitted. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Posed, same sign, so ordered, and we stand adjourned.